We ran a little bit over with our 6:30 executive session, which was about the Navarre Palm litigation. So we're now ready to start with the main business of tonight, which is the board's discussion and potentially possibly decision regarding the four finalist candidates. The offer, if we were to decide to make one, would be conditional on satisfactory background check and also the negotiation of a mutually agreeable contract. The board's interview of all four candidates on Saturday, all day, was highly informative and very interesting. The town is really fortunate to have four excellent candidates to consider for that. The town manager search committee deserves recognition and thanks again for eight months of laborious effort that resulted in the recommendation of the four finalists. And I'm going to recite for the benefit of the TV audience, the town manager search committee members, our chairman, Pat Clifford, and members Mary Ann Ashton, John Benson, who is now the newest selectman, Mike Gowing, Charlie Cadlec, Juan Kong, Steve Noon, Sahana Poroit, and Nancy Tavernier. The discussion tonight is going to start with, I think, board members sharing their observations about all of the candidates and if one candidate stands out, who that person is and why. After that, we'll open it up for public comment. Since Thursday, when we first started this process, the board has received a number of email comments from citizens and appreciates their taking the time to study the candidates and share their opinions about the candidates. After a public comment, it'll be back to the board for a possible vote. The hope is that the board won't be hopelessly divided and that we'll be able to support unanimously one candidate, which would be better, I think, for whoever the successful candidate might be. After the vote, if there is one, then I will explain next steps. I've been in conversation with the HR director and also by email with the town council. But I will deal with that if and when the time comes to talk about that. So I will start by asking my colleagues if they would like to share their perspective of the candidates, the written materials, the interviews, and anything else. I'll guess maybe I'll go the way I went on Saturday, Katie, Joan, Peter, and John. And then me last.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Janet. Yeah, I'll echo Janet's thanks first to the town manager search committee. We were extremely fortunate with the four candidates. It was a lot of work that you did to narrow it down and you sent forward four people, any of whom I think would be good town managers for Acton, and I expected nothing less. And I just want to say too, I think part of the reason we had so many qualified candidates was how well our town has currently been run for, you know, many, many years. And so people saw this as a desirable place to come and to want to work. And I think almost all of them mentioned that this is a place that they'd want to be for many years. So it's not somebody who's looking here to just, you know, make their next career move, be here for a couple of years, and then move on to something bigger and better. I felt from all of them like they really wanted to be here and hopefully for as long as Steve and maybe longer. So I thought that was great. And like I said, I was really impressed reading through all the materials for all of them and then hearing them. None of them came and, you know, bombed the interview or anything. They all did wonderful and all had positive attributes. So just a couple of points I liked about each of them, and this is just in the order that we saw them on the day of to start, but Lisa Hemmerly, I was really impressed that she came and presented us a hundred-day plan for what her transition would be. She was the only one that had clearly laid out what that would look like, understanding that it was a draft and something she'd work on with us. But I was extremely impressed by that. I think she's a very innovative thinker and she's, I thought, probably the most dedicated to a lot of the values of our community and understood those on a really in-depth level and has been living those out in her work in Cambridge. So I was really impressed with that. And I also think she was somebody, she was very well spoken and she was somebody who seemed to me like she would definitely face things head-on and that if there was an issue she didn't know a lot about, that she was dedicated to learning more about that and coming up to speed on it quickly. And I think that's important, even if you have experience, you're going to face something new. And so she really demonstrated to me that she's willing to tackle that. John, I don't know his names here, Mangio Reddy. I thought he had best researched Acton and really knew a lot about us. I think part of that might have been his time serving in Westford as well, just being close by. And so I think he really understood us as a community and had done a lot of work to learn more about us before our interview, which was great. I think he's also really experienced in reaching out to the community and building consensus and being collaborative, and I really liked that. He had, I thought, the best probably sense of a positive relationship between the board of selectmen and the town manager would be. And I felt like he would be really dedicated to empowering all of our staff to do their best. And I think when we consider how experienced our staff members are and particularly our various department directors, that's really important to me. Steve's done, Steve Ladue has done a really wonderful job of that. And you see it in all of the innovative ideas and programs that all of our divisions and departments have come up with. And so I want somebody who will build on that. And he spoke about building on the work that we've already done in Acton, and I thought that was good as well. He's not somebody who wanted to come in here and change up what we do. We're a very successful and well-run community, and I think he recognizes that. Sean Hendricks, I thought, you know, he has great experience as a town manager. He spoke about a really innovative program that he had worked on for veterans. And again, you know, I think he probably most forcefully laid out that he really would want to come here and retire here. And so I thought that was good. And Stephen Crane, I also felt like he had done a lot of research into Acton. He's also experienced as a town manager and experienced in communities that are similar to ours in many ways. I felt like he understood the benefits of regional efforts. I think being in a community in more western Massachusetts, you get that a lot more and it's something that, you know, perhaps we could use here. And I thought he had a good sense of economic development and how to smartly promote that. And I liked that he was, he spoke about how dedicated he's been in his whole career to public service and how much that meant to him. And I thought that was really important. To me, I think the two that stood out the most to me that I felt, again, I think any would be great candidates, I felt that Lisa and John, I thought, would be the best fits for our town. And I know both of those are the ones who haven't had experience as a town manager and are both on the younger side, but I actually thought that was a good opportunity. I think both of them, and Lisa in particular, we would need to get, you know, some sort of dedicated mentoring program. I think those are out there though. And I think John, you know, having a mentor would help as well. But when I thought about it, you know, we have, again, really experienced and knowledgeable town staff and particularly our finance department and our HR department. And they know, I think, Lisa, one of the issues, you know, where she might know, the least is budgeting at a town-wide level and also collective bargaining. But we have people who really understand that here. And so I thought with a lot of work and effort, she could get up to speed on that. We're also appointing somebody, hopefully, you know, in early April, who won't be starting until July, so we have time. And again, considering the caliber of our staff and their knowledge, I think that they would be able to help somebody. And I thought that she, it would be maybe the riskiest choice in some ways because she's sort of the, she described herself as the orange in the apple tree, you know? She at least fits what we might think of as the ideal candidate for a town manager in terms of experience, previous experience as a town manager or in a town like ours. But I thought that she was, again, I think, the most innovative thinker and that that could lead to really great things here. But I also really, really liked John a lot as well. I just felt like he understood our community and I really thought he would do a good job working well with our staff and empowering our staff and working well with the board. And I loved his experience in Andover and in particular in some of his projects there. And I felt like he's dedicated to this town and he would be here. You know, I think there was some concern that, oh, it's only been two years since he's been in Andover, but he was essentially recruited for this. And so, you know, it wasn't that he was out looking for a new job, but this is an incredible opportunity. And it just felt, it was one of those things that really felt like the right click and it was kind of that weird magic of the right person at the right time. And so I liked both of them very strongly. But again, really impressed and just grateful to the town manager search committee for all of your work.
Joan.
Well, I echo Katie in thanking the committee that brought the four candidates to us. I was impressed with each one of them for very different reasons. My heart went to Lisa, but my head went to John. And I think they bring different strengths, but both of them would be good for the town. Sean Hendricks had a different vibe, I thought. And knowing our department heads, I just thought that John and Lisa could relate to them. So those would be my two candidates.
Peter.
Actually, the person I had number one was Stephen Crane. I thought his personality was the most appealing of the four of them, although clearly they're all very gifted and very qualified and can do the job. I liked his answers about what he did in Wisconsin when there was huge disruption of the workforce. He dealt with people as individuals and, you know, considered them good people and continued to try to work with them, seems to have been successful in doing that. I liked his description of the DIF program that he put together in western Massachusetts, seemed like an innovative, taking advantage of a, what I understand to be a new tool in the town's toolbox. But mostly, I think, given, he has, I think, the most experience probably as a town manager, working in Worcester Lowell. He has the development experience. It was just the way he responded, his demeanor, his ability to kind of let words just kind of flow, you know, in a way that was really appealing. And that, to me, shows kind of leadership skills that I thought were pretty attractive. I think Lisa certainly would be to the town's benefit to hire a disabled woman and have that ability to maybe break down some barriers that we have in town for disabled people and relate to people with disabilities as well as provide a leadership role for a woman. I think her hundred-day plan shows her planning background. I mean, I think that's the way she thinks in terms, like a planner. She has all this economic development experience. The one thing I questioned about her was the lack of experience in other areas of town government that she doesn't have. Not that she couldn't learn it for sure, but she wouldn't hit the ground running as well as Steve Crane, I don't think. I did have questions about what goals that she has in her life that would attract her to Acton away from Cambridge. And I think that's the question that Janet asked, and she satisfied me on that. I mean, I thought she was genuine in her answer and it made sense, so I bet that resolved that question I had. I guess my second choice would be John. He's younger. He doesn't have as much, well, he doesn't have any real town manager experience, although he's certainly, being deputy town manager, gives him a lot of experience in working with Andover. He's a little younger, so he talked about being quiet and I thought that, as opposed to Stephen Crane, who, you know, just seemed to be more comfortable in responding to questions. I took that from John to be more of that. And I think when Joan asked him his weaknesses, he talked about being too quiet, but he's extremely thoughtful. So I think before he talks, which is a very good idea, he thinks things through. And, you know, people who are quiet often get a lot more accomplished because then when they say something, everybody listens to them rather than somebody who just drones on and on and turns people off. So I was very impressed with him. I thought he was a great candidate and clearly dedicated to the job. I don't, you know, he didn't give me any, he gave me the indication that he wants to be a town manager and there's no other aspirations that would draw him away from this job. So he would be my second candidate. I did like Sean's innovative approach to having a coffee house for vets, certainly seemed to work and expanding and, you know, he talks about vets getting together and talk. But one of the problems with PTSD is you don't talk about your service. So that is an innovative way of getting people to come out of their shell, and it seems to have worked. He's a lawyer, which I think brings skills to the job that would be helpful. I kind of agree with the other comments that he's clearly, his military background comes through in terms of his rigid backbone and I would say leadership style. He's kind of more hardwired than either John or Stephen were. So although I think he's clearly an attractive candidate, he was the one who would be fourth on my list. But Stephen, John, Lisa, and Sean.
John, go ahead.
So search committee, we, looks like we did an awfully good job. I thought Steve and John were the four superior candidates. I thought both interviewed better on Saturday than when I saw them before the search committee in early March. Now, maybe it was a question of, we saw them at night and on Saturday we saw them during the day. They both come from like communities, experienced Long Meadow, Westford, Andover. They're both young men who've dedicated their careers to public service. Unfortunately, we can only have one of them. When the resumes first came to the search committee, Steve leaped out at me as being the best on paper. The question I had for him that I asked the other day, would he actually come here and move his family and come the distance? And he said, look, I've really thought about it in terms of my daughters, I've moved them before. It seemed to me this would likely be the last move he'd want to make, assuming, you know, all things equal. I do have a concern about comparative, which I didn't feel comfortable asking him, comparative housing costs between Long Meadow and Acton. I understand his salary there is approximately $120,000, where it would be considerably more here, and that might bridge the gap. I do have some doubts whether he could still, based on family pressures, change his mind and stay put. The key thing for me with Stephen was, he just had gravitas in talking to him on Saturday and how we could just, you know, talk complexity of issues and what town managers see. John, I really liked him. I thought he did a much better job on Saturday than he did in March with us. He was much more sure of himself. He spoke more substantively on issues. He has fire in his belly for the job, much like I saw with Don Johnson in 1986 when he interviewed before another committee that was a smaller group. And he just really wanted the job. He was ready and thinking back to Don, he was the building inspector and that was a hang-up that the committee, you know, got over. But I would compare the two of them. I think he would be a great and easy fit for the town staff. He's just got a real good personality and ease with people. He would be a first-time manager. So, you know, you just have to take into account, he's likely to make a few mistakes along, at least in the first year or two, that we can, you know, all live with. So my two choices, you know, would be Stephen and John. When I left here on Saturday, I was with Stephen, and I'm glad we took the 72 hours. And as I've thought about, it's the two of them. It's a great choice to have. You know, at this moment, I would lean and go with John, but those two would be the names I'd put in the hopper.
All right. A lot of what I was thinking, people have already said, I really, reading just the paper, the application files, I liked every single one of them. I read them Thursday night after our meeting, as tired as I was, and I thought, well, this is great. I like every single one of them for very different reasons, and I don't know how I'm going to choose. And then I read the files again and had the same reaction. And then went through the interviews and I think that I really liked Lisa and I really respect her for what she has managed to accomplish, especially after she had a profound setback 17 years ago, everything that she was told she wouldn't be able to do, that she has managed to do. I think that she's got this wonderful job in Cambridge and I really don't know why she would want to come to Acton. She did say why, but I still think, gosh, you know, you're in the heart of Cambridge. Why wouldn't you want to stay there? But I did have some concerns that, you know, even though she obviously has management skills in a different context, that she hasn't done, exercised those skills in sort of a town setting with a town manager and board of selectmen. And then I was a little bit concerned about the lack of collective bargaining experience because we, frankly, we have a town manager currently who has a lot of grounding in that. I did think that she was very, I thought that it was to her credit that she started up this New Hampshire chapter of the National Spinal Cord Injury Organization. And I did like the fact that she took the initiative to have a 100-day transitional plan. But I thought that maybe she could try, maybe a smaller town, where she could be the head honcho and develop the skills as a town manager before tackling a town like ours because we have been blessed to have very stable and strong managers for decades. And I think that it will, it will be difficult for maybe some people to accept that people are going to make mistakes or stumble. And I think that for the sake of our staff, as capable as they are, I'm not convinced that it's a good situation to have somebody who's in charge, who needs to get up to speed with the help of the staff beneath them. I've seen work situations like that where somebody comes in, is in charge, and is counting on the senior staff members to get up to speed, and it can be kind of demoralizing. John, I could see, you know, I thought, well, first of all, he had the Westford connection and he did overlap with our current manager, who actually hired him. And I thought, well, wouldn't this be interesting if the successor came, also came from Westford? But he has a lot of experience that really is consonant with things that were either, we've done, a lot of things we've done, similar-sized towns. But he's done the intermunicipal agreement about drinking water. He has collective bargaining experience. He's green community status, he applied for that. He's dealt with solar power net metering. He did the regional electric aggregation program, and then he's worked on redevelopment of a brownfield site. And I thought, well, there's, you know, there's a lot of sort of common ground there. But I think that, I was a little bit concerned that he has not done the town manager job. I thought that, and he is, well, he's younger, and I thought maybe he needs a little more seasoning as assistant slash deputy town manager before he steps up to be town manager in a town like Acton. And because, I mean, for the past 10 years, Acton's had a town manager who came to us with decades of experience and we've kind of gotten used to that. Sean Hendricks, I thought, yeah, he came across as being a sort of a very classically militarily-trained leader, very good background lawyer, that's not, you know, I'm not biased toward him just because of that. And he had a really nice, what I noticed actually about all of them is I liked the way they write. I'm very fussy about written expression and I noticed that they all had a very nice way of putting things. But I think that Mr. Hendricks in particular, I thought, had a nice turn of phrase. And then I realized, okay, he was an English major, so when he was in college, so maybe that had something to do with it. But something, things like disparate ideas, like economic development and open space acquisition are not competing interests, but rather ideas that need each other. Anyhow, many solutions do not require creativity as much as diligence. So I appreciated that, but I still thought that there was, I wasn't really convinced that he was a good fit for our community. I did like his veterans' idea about the coffee shop. I thought it's something that, you know, maybe our town could consider because we have the senior center now with the human services in the building and we have the veteran services officer there, that maybe there can be a little more community there that includes veterans, including those who are suffering from PTSD who don't talk. Just, it's a little more inclusive now than it was at the old location where I think there were seniors who sort of guarded the door and looked suspiciously at anybody who looks too young to be a senior. And then there's finally Stephen Crane, who I have to say really, really stood out for me. And when I was doing my own research online, I found a number of videos of at least three of the candidates. And I found one for him, I think it was when he had just arrived in Long Meadow and he was being interviewed by, I don't know, it's a local TV show. And I had notes, I had columns, four columns, and I was writing about each person. And I had in his column, all I wrote was calm. It was just a quality, and it's the same quality that came across during Saturday's interview. I think a lot of it has to do with, it's just the way he is. I think he has been dedicated to the public sector from the time he got out of college. He has worked as a town manager. And I think that he has a lot of the experience that we really would need or look for in a town manager that would enable him to hit the ground running. And also, at the same time, I don't think that he's just simply going to continue what we have. I think that he's a very, he seems to be a very creative person with ideas. I thought, you know, that DIF thing that he was talking about with using bonding to sort of create cash flow to bond and do more infrastructure improvements, I thought that was something that I hadn't heard of. And there were a lot of things that he talked about that honestly, and I probably said it during the meeting, that were interesting, that I would have liked to have asked him more about more, except that we really didn't have time to do that, just to chat with him, not as part of an interview. So my top two candidates are really, are Stephen Crane and John Mangialati for very different reasons. But they all, as I said, they brought different strengths to the job. They're all excellent. And they all, answering questions, provided ideas that I thought would be useful in our town. And the last thing that I noticed that I thought was important, because I was interested in getting a flavor of them for not just working with us, but working with town staff, was that they represented that they wouldn't be micro-managers. So they would empower town staff, the department directors, pretty much in the way that Steve Ladue would, has done. Although I think I can believe that some of them more than others would be, not be micro-managers. So that's where things stand. So it sounds as if we've got, well, we have some consensus on one person and we have a split on the other, and it's a matter of how strongly people feel about their, yeah. But anyhow, right now, while, we're going to take a break and we're going to invite audience members to, if you have any comments, share your wisdom.
Share your wisdom.
I didn't work for eight months and attend 23 meetings and spend countless hours reading resumes and essay questions, not to say something. So let me give you just a different perspective. I've done a lot of hiring in my career at fairly high levels. You're in a good position. You've got four good candidates. Any one of them could be successful here. My personal choice would be Stephen Crane. And, and I'm looking at that from, what is the, who's the lowest risk of potentially being a problem hire? He's done the job. He's done the job in a similar community. He's got a career in public service. He's also calm. Lisa Hemmerly can do the job. She's got the, certainly got the skill sets. I mean, she's CPA, she used to work in finance in the public sector, but she's moving to a different level of government. There's a risk there. And John Mangiavanti, I really like, but there's the classic dilemma of the number two guy moving up to the top slot. Not everybody does it. Personally, I think he could do it, but you're taking just a little bit more risk moving somebody, especially at his age, up to a top spot. So I, I look at it as you really can't go too far along, but, and maybe all four of them would be, would do very well, but you have to pick one of them. We had, it, it only sounded like we had the hard part. You have the hard part. But just from the, who's, who's the least likely to prove to be a problem, I'd say it's Stephen Crane.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to share thoughts? Everybody's shy. I can't believe it, Mr. Gowing finally. You're the shyest, you're the shyest of all.
That's how they always describe me, shy. I was just kind of doing thumbnail. We spent something in the neighborhood of about 800 man-hours going through this process. I can, I know, I know, she didn't want to hear that. Because it felt like more. We had other candidates that were in like jobs. One of the things that we also wanted to do was bring different, do a little out of the box thinking as well, to give you some chance to, to evaluate somebody who isn't just a lockstep. This is the job that they did, to see what else they could bring to it. But I would say that at the end of the day, when we moved the five that ended up netting as four, any one of those would be acceptable to me in terms of the, the skill sets and the abilities that they demonstrated, their ability to communicate well and understand the problems that we're faced with and the opportunities and, and make the most of them. So I'm, I'm sorry that you're, you're forced to deal with this, but it's much better than the 58 we started.
Yes, in that respect, I have to say that our job is, is somewhat easier because we have better choices than I think you did. But, all right. Does anybody have anything else to say? We are, any of the people, you've, you've picked two, are there strong preferences for one or the other, between the two that you've picked?
I mean, I'll just say, all of us mentioned at the top, John, and so it seems to me like he's a candidate I would hope, I think we could potentially all coalesce around or feel very comfortable with. And I thought, you know, again, I, I get he's a little bit more of a risk, but I think sometimes when you take a bit of a risk, you get a really good payoff. And I just, like, like I said, I just had this feeling about him and, and I think part of it was, I don't know, I don't know if it was the Western thing a little bit too and that weird, you know, sort of synergy with following Steve's, you know, path in a, in a different way. But I'll also point out, he's been an assistant town manager for eight years, so it's not as though he's been an assistant town manager for a year or two. He's only been two years in Andover, but he's been there six years in, in Westford. So he's got the experience and when you're an assistant town manager, you learn everything and many people, you know, that is the progression in their career and, and what they are striving for. And again, I just felt like he'd be the right fit for this community at this time. So that, you know, again, I, it seemed like we all at least mentioned him towards the top of people that, that we really liked, so I would, I would lean towards him, but...
Peter?
You know, John, the essay question about what other information you want to tell us about that we didn't ask, he emphasized his integrity and his compassion and defining characteristics of my personality. My, my integrity helps me establish trust with people I interact with every day as a professional manager, as a community member, as a family member and as a friend. Compassion helps me understand challenges. You know, that sounds to me like the mountain climber. I mean, you don't think of compassion as the first leadership skill you look for, but I agree that it is. It should be. It's concern for other people that you're working with that attracts them to you as a leader. So I like that very much. On the other hand, Stephen had the experience of working in, in Washington and with the legislative process. I think that also kind of rounds out your experience and is a very helpful background to have in terms of being able to work with people and make compromises and put teams of people together to move forward on issues. The thing about Stephen is when he answered, as opposed to John, he had already been through, you know, he had experience with the areas we were asking him questions about. John was a little more, and it might, it might be just because of his quiet nature, had to think a little bit more before he answered. And Stephen's answers were just kind of spontaneous and, and they were all right on, as far as I was concerned. He wasn't just rambling on. So I think that's more indicative of his broader range of experience and having encountered all of these issues before and having thought them through and being able to talk about them easily.
John, I have a question. You, you said you were leading Stephen and, or leading Crane and now you've shifted to John and I'm wondering what caused the shift?
He spells it differently. You know, I, I think about the, the town staff, the professional staff in town. Both would be very good with them. I think John would be better. I, I just, it's just, it's just a gut. I think he's a, just, he's grown up here, he lives in Westford, town manager, assistant manager there and Andover, very like communities. I'm just a little more comfortable with the fit. I, I did reach out and do some reconnaissance this morning to a, a friend in Andover who served on the finance, I mean, she had been away for the weekend, so she said, what's this going on? I said, well, this was just announced Thursday night and who are your candidates? And she's Googling away as we're talking and she says, between, you know, Stephen and John, she said, you got, you got two really good ones. Her experiences with John have been very positive over the past two years. When she needs something, he provides it timely, the work is thorough, the work's complete. They did a lot of work on this intermunicipal water agreement with, with North Reading and he was one of the outreach people. They did about 10 outreaches around town. North Reading had been, or Andover had been supplying water to North Reading out of the Meramec River for 49 years, but they want, North Reading wants a firmed up agreement for 99 years and there they have a diff problem. They have enough water to, to go around. But, but she said he was just, just, just excellent on that and she says, my God, we hate to lose him. She talked about a very rough year they had in, in Andover. There were two very difficult selectmen who just finished up their tenures and two good people are coming on to take their place, but they wreaked havoc the last year. They wanted the resignation of the chairman of the board of selectmen, the resignation of the town manager, the resignation of the school superintendent. So it was a very heady year and John weathered that, although he wasn't a target, you know, he held his own in that and kept the ship going and, you know, that, that's got to be I just feel he'd, you know, he'd, he'd fit better. As I said, it's, it's sort of gravitas versus fire in the belly, a very personable guy. We're taking a little risk, but you're taking, you're always taking a risk. None of these people are, are perfect. You know, we took a risk in 1986 with Don Johnson, you know, the building inspector. And 22 years later, he was left much beloved. So that's why I kind of lean that way.
I think Katie, Katie is correct. I mean, I did say at the outset that I was hoping that we could reach a unanimous decision and it certainly seems as if we all have at least mentioned John, either in position number one, number one or number two ranking. And so I'm just wondering if people are prepared to support him, support making an offer to him.
I'll make a, I mean, I'll make a motion at this point and we can talk about it, but I guess I'll move to make an offer to, let me just get the name. John Mangiavanti. My telling teacher will be very mad that I still can't do this. A conditional and a background search and, and successful contract negotiations.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Are people ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Based on that, we have a release form that we send out. I'm going to contact all four candidates tonight. And we will send this off to the designated candidate that you folks chose tonight. Needs to be signed, it protects the town, it needs to be signed by the candidate because we're doing the, we've told you, for a pretty aggressive background check. So I'll leave your copies of this, but we will send it out probably tomorrow morning.
Okay, with that, since we have now voted to make an offer, a conditional offer to a candidate, and the next step is for us to schedule an executive session so that the board can talk with the HR director and town council if board members want council to be present to go over the proposed template agreement. It probably will be the current town manager's contract, but updated by town council to reflect any legal requirements. And then we also need to touch, talk about items that require negotiation with the candidate benefits that, and perquisites that the town currently offers and all the rest of it and then also discuss next steps. So I will probably try offline to set up a time and it should be before a regular meeting on, on April 23rd, which is a little bit too far off. I know that this background check is going to take a while, but I, I don't want us to wait until the 23rd to, to make progress on this agreement. And so I will be in touch offline to see if there's a time when we can, we can set up and when Marion Fleckner, the HR director, can come. Do people want Nina Perkin Cook to be present? You want, okay. I'll see, you know, because she said, yeah, there are dates when she can't, she can't be here between now and our, our first regular meeting, so I'll have to, I'll try to figure out when she's available, when Marion's available and then we'll have to fill in.
Maybe if we can't, maybe if we can't all do it when Nina's available, then we don't have Nina here, but otherwise, that, take that as the first step.
Okay, okay, we'll do. All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
John moves and Katie seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you.